I'd like to welcome you all to Iowa State on this wonderful blustery Ames, Iowa afternoon. And thank you for taking time out of your day to be here. Today, we are privileged to have Representative Michelle Bachmann speaking on jobs and the economy. As this is where our -- how fitting that we are on a college campus, as this is where our country's up and coming workforce is being trained. Yet, almost no one has been affected by the recession more than college-age students. Overall, 20- to 24-year-olds have an unemployment rate of 16 percent. And even college grads in that age demographic have an unemployment rate of well over 10 percent. Add this to the number of college students going back to school after graduation because they can't find a job, this has skyrocketed as well. Which, by the way, further devalues an undergraduate degree, making it harder to focus for undergrads to find a job. And one will find that the job placement rate for college students is now down to 67 percent, or about two-thirds. Throw in increased tuition, record student debt, and having to bear the burden of past government spending, and our economic outlook could be considered pretty bleak here as college students. As Americans, we can overcome this, but we need a drastic shift in course, and that is where Representative Bachmann enters the picture. First elected in 2006, Michelle is the first Republican woman to be elected to the U.S. House of Representatives from Minnesota. From the beginning, she has demonstrated bold reform, pushing to fix Washington's broken ways. Michelle is a leading advocate for tax reform, a staunch opponent of wasteful government spending, and a strong proponent of adherence to the Constitution, as intended by the founding fathers. She believes government has grown exponentially, with Obamacare being the most recent example of its uninhibited growth. Michelle wants government to make the kind of serious spending decisions that many families and small businesses have been forced to make. She is a champion of free markets, and she believes in the vitality of the family as the -- of the first unit of government. She is also a defender of the unborn, and it staunchly stands for religious liberties. In July 2010, Michelle hosted the first Tea Party caucus meeting. She is seen as a champion of Tea Party values, including the call for lower taxes, renewed focus on the Constitution, and the need to shrink the size of government. Without further ado, I'd like to welcome Representative Michelle Bachmann to the stage.
Stephen, thank you. Thank you. Stephen, thank you so much for that great introduction. Thank you for all of you coming out today. I appreciate your time. We're here to talk about a very important subject that will have immediate relevance to each one of you, and that's how we're going to turn the economy around, to make sure that you can have jobs for your futures, so that you can begin to enjoy the American dream. I know there's a few people that are around the room, and just like church, it's the seats in the front row that are left open. So you're invited and welcome to come and sit up here if you'd like to have a seat. And it's terrific to have you here. I apologize to those behind you. I don't mean to have my back to you, but we're going to have a good time here over the next few minutes, and I look forward to the point, especially when we can have your questions, so we can have a dialogue and an interaction. And I can't help but note that you are all so young and so good-looking. I remember what that feeling was when you're young and you're thin, and just appreciate it because it doesn't last forever. So, thank you guys for being here. I am in Iowa. I grew up here. I was born here. I was raised up in Cedar Falls, and a lot of my family still are here in Iowa. Ames is the site of the Iowa Straw Pull that I was grateful to have won this summer in less time than any other candidate in the history of the Straw Pull, and the first woman to have ever won the Iowa Straw Pull. So I was grateful that it was an Iowan who was able to win this year. And also, I was here on the day that the Cyclones successfully walloped the Hawkeyes, and I just want you to know, I'll be up there to deliver my sympathy to them the next time that I am up in Iowa City. So let me go proceed with my remarks that I prepared for you today, and thank you for your kind attention. Our third president wrote a letter to our second president, and in that letter, he wrote, it was actually John Adams that said this to Thomas Jefferson, he said, "You and I ought not to die before we have explained ourselves to each other." You see, they had a long-running rivalry, and Adams felt it was very important at that stage in their relationship that they actually figure out what it was that they disagreed with with each other. And I think that's one thing that politics is missing, the element of trying to at least understand where your opposing party is coming from. And before our struggling economy falls further into a freefall like it is today, I want to offer my opinion to you here this morning in Ames on the best course of action that I believe that our nation should take to solve the economic problems that we're dealing with. As I mentioned to you, I am an Iowan, but I'm also a former federal tax litigation attorney, and I'm also a creator from scratch of a successful, profitable business. And yes, I boldly stand here today and say, "I believe in profit," and I think profit is a good thing, and we need more of it. I can think of no better place than Iowa State University to offer my explanation of how the United States can turn the economy around into the crucible of public debate. And I'm running for president because of the young people that are here in this room today. I have a very strong personal interest in all of you. I have given birth to five biological children who are now grown, gone, three of whom are today in college, and also 23 foster children came into my home, and my husband and I together raised them and launched them off into the world as well. So you see, I am the old woman in the shoe with 28 kids, and I have a very strong, deep investment in your generation and in the life that you will know in the future in realizing the American dream. Because I believe that this 2012 race is about you more than anyone else in this country. It's about you and about what your future holds for you. And over the last several months, all of us have been rightly concerned about the high unemployment that Stephen mentioned in his opening remarks. It's even more profoundly difficult for African-Americans. African-American youth unemployment this summer was a staggering 45 percent of good kids who wanted to work but couldn't find a job. It was staggering also for Hispanic youth. It was 36 percent good kids who wanted to work but couldn't find a job. That's continuing to imperil our country as well as the lives of those individuals. Now, it was just a few weeks ago that our Senate Majority Leader, Harry Reid, said something that summed up, I thought, quite nicely, the fantasy economic thinking that's dominating in Washington, D.C. today, when he said, "It's very clear," and I quote, "that private sector jobs have been doing just fine. It's the public sector jobs where we've lost huge numbers." Now, that caused a lot of people's jaws to hit the ground when Majority Leader Reid said that, because since 2007, it's the private sector where we've seen dramatic loss of jobs, three times greater than in the governments and the public sector. Because today, the average wage of a federal employee is over $126,000 when you combine the wage and benefits packages. That's roughly two-and-a-half times the U.S. median wage. The United States of America is history's most successful political and economic experiment, and the United States has proved that a country that is rooted in free-market competition will lead the world in innovation in areas that have advanced disciplines. And your university has been part of that miracle story here in Ames. You have dealt, not only just at this school, but also at Iowa State. You've led in the areas of medicine, of science, of technology. You churn out great engineers, and I encourage even more engineers to be churned out in America's schools. And you've made our quality of life second to none. But when government forcefully takes your money from you through taxes and then gives it to politicians and political donors, like we've seen in the recent Solyndra scandal, among others of this administration, then it becomes our cash for government's clunkers. And worse, American competitiveness in the world becomes a casualty and badly damaged. Some who are currently a part of Occupy Wall Street believe that the problem that we're facing today is capitalism, and that the problem today are free markets. It's not. The problem is government doing what both the Constitution and decent morality prohibit, and that is crony capitalism, or forcefully taking your money away from you for the purpose of paying off a politician's political friends. You see, it's done every day in Washington, D.C. The problem is one set of standards the government has for individual Americans, and another separate set of standards for those who make political donations to candidates. That's wrong, and that has to stop. Because the problem is an individual tax code that has 3.8 million words that's really so complicated, the average American today has to pay someone to fill out their tax form, and a corporate tax code that makes America hopelessly uncompetitive at a 40, near 40 percent tax rate when you combine both federal and state taxes. And a state tax -- and a tax code that contains loopholes that are exploited by companies who are big enough and rich enough to hire enough armies of lawyers to exempt them from the requirements that are applied to smaller companies that have no ability to be able to go to Washington and somehow pay their way out of those high taxes. As Investors Business Daily wrote this week, "In 1981, the entire developed world had high corporate tax rates, averaging 47 percent. Then capital became mobile, and rates plummeted to 25 percent, and they haven't stopped falling. Only the United States remains stuck since 1986 in an out-of-date, high corporate tax rate that has sent companies fleeing America for a more competitive tax climate. Look no further than Iowa, where we have seen great companies like Maytag and Electrolux and any number of companies. Ask them why they left states like Iowa." I've been asking all sorts of entrepreneurs across this state, "Why are you thinking of leaving, or will you consider leaving?" And they tell me, "It's because of high tax rates and high unreasonable regulatory burdens." You see, they will be your future employers. It's important to listen. And other nations are now unbelievably a more profitable place to do business. We have to admit that very hard fact. Whereas America was formerly the best place to do business, we can no longer claim that mantle. That's a shame, and that's what I intend to change as President of the United States. I want our nation to once again be the number-one place to do business in the world. And it's for your sake and for your future. America, and Occupy Wall Street in particular, needs to wake up and stop blaming the free market, stop blaming capitalism, stop blaming job creators for the failures that have been created by selfish politicians. Because the problem is politicians who wink at their political donors and through the force of law, put their competitors out of business. Yes, you heard me right. They use the force of law to put their competition out of business. Because politicians assure their friends that with government's financial backing, their business will never fail. It happens every day, and it has to stop. Because we are not a banana republic. We should stop acting like a banana republic. We're the United States of America, and we need to start acting like that again. We need a system that forces large, well-connected corporations to play by the same rules as small businesses and individual Americans that protects and provides fair competition in free markets. Because you see, there's a reason that our founding fathers decided to establish our political capital in a different city than our financial capital. Because it's time for us to reaffirm the wisdom of that decision by getting Washington, D.C. out of free markets. And I'm running for President of the United States because I understand the difference between free markets and a Bernie Madoff-style of government. We also need a president who understands the Constitution and the limits of the power of the federal government. Because the federal government has continually taken on duties and financial obligations that are not enumerated in the Constitution. This is where we went off course. This is when our nation began to get into financial trouble. Food stamps, the Department of Education, the Automobile Task Force, the government takeover of housing, healthcare, the student loan industry, they're all examples of the federal government taking over and doing what the Constitution did not explicitly enumerate. And you, the college students in this room, are the ones who will pay that impossibly heavy price for politicians acting outside the Constitution. You see, this wasn't monopoly money the politicians were spending. This was real money. And every time they made a decision to choose to spend more money than we took in, well, they chose to spend your future and your life and your choices. That's a very real consequence that you have to pay. So for every dollar that we spend on these programs, realize, over 40 cents, 43 cents of every dollar that is spent today by the federal government is money that we borrowed from countries like China, money that you'll have to work to pay back. Not only you, but your kids and generations beyond you. So here's your bottom line. My opinion is this: 2012 is it. This is the last exit ramp for regaining the American dream. Because unless we significantly reduce the overspending by the federal government and significantly end the tyranny of $1.8 trillion every year in the costs of regulations on job creators, then you are going to face a level of taxation just to pay the interest on the debt to such an extent that it will significantly lower your standard of living, and it will remove your incentive to compete in the global economy. Because after all, will you really want to get up in the morning to go off to work every day knowing that as much as 75 percent of your paycheck could be leveled or required to pay for taxation at all levels, state, local, and federal? That's a very grim prospect in the future, and one that no other generation has ever had to bear. My goal is to make sure that your generation never bears that burden as well. And it's not just problems here at home that loom on the horizon. While the focus of these comments before you today is on our problems here in the United States, I say to you this week, open your eyes. Pay attention to the events that are unfolding, even this week, in Europe, because they carry both a warning for you and a risk for everyone in this room. Because events in Greece and Italy show, the European-style social-democrat model is a game that ends in a thud, an ugly crash-landing. It's Greek-style government spending on bureaucracies that don't enhance the wealth of a nation, that bankrupt a nation. And your politicians, and President Obama in particular, voted to burden the free markets by carrying a gold-plated, gargantuan government which slowed growth, lowered taxes, and entered the United States into a seemingly irreversible downward spiral. Now, President Obama isn't the only responsible actor. There's a lot of Republicans that have a very large responsibility to bear, including President Bush. He was behind the $700 billion bailout. President Obama, as a candidate for president, also supported that bailout. I opposed that bailout, and I opposed the Bush administration on that bailout, because I knew that ultimately, it would create a moral hazard. Because once people are bailed out, they know that they can go back to that same source in the future, and they continue to make the same bad decisions, believing that you will once again carry out and bail them out of their bad decisions. Because you see, the United States is now entering into a seemingly irreversible downward spiral. And our deficit relative to our economy is larger than Italy's, and it's actually not much different from that of Greece. The difference is, we're a much larger country. And so when we come to our crash-landing, it's a much bigger thud than the one that Germany or that Greece is experiencing today. This is a road, trust me, that we don't want to walk down. And I worry when I hear the president, and many in his party, call for an even larger government paid for by even larger taxes on those who produce the wealth and the jobs on which our economy depends. This week, there was a $6 billion-plus bankruptcy that was filed by MF Global, on Monday, as a matter of fact. And as a result of their investments in European bonds, it shows how susceptible the American economy and our financial institutions can be to a failure in Europe. John Corzine is the head of MF Global. He was, after all, the head of Goldman Sachs, and he was the Democrat senator and the Democrat governor of New Jersey. But he also was a true believer that government spending could increase and go on forever. And that is, after all, why he and MF Global made the enormously highly-leveraged bets on European bonds. Because you see, what they bet is that bailouts would go on forever, but they don't. But it now appears that Corzine and MF Global went too far, not only losing their money and the money of their equity holders, but that of their customers as well. You see, that's a problem. How many other money managers are there out there with Corzine's beliefs and the omniscience of government who are also overly exposed to Europe? That has profound consequences for you, for me, and for the rest of the nation, and could lead us back into an ugly recession, just at the time when you'll be looking for a job to pay off your student loans. Well, President Obama believes the answer to our economy is more spending, more borrowing, more taxing, and more government control of the free markets, which is why we have the 2,400-page Dodd-Frank legislation. I call it lovingly "The Jobs and Housing Destruction Act," because that's what it has proved to be. And even after we were assured that all this regulation would protect us, we still have not protected either the economy or the investing public from events like this. So in order for us to regain our competitive edge in the global economy, we have to quickly pivot to do what we did when we were a wildly successful economy: tax less, regulate less, encourage risk-taking more. Now, you recall recently the passing of Steve Jobs. It saddened every one of us. He was more than the co-founder of Apple, he was an icon. He represented what is great about America, and Steve Jobs never settled. He constantly asked his employees if they had produced their best product. And who could have imagined that just a few years ago, that you would have all your music, a still camera, a video camera, your photos, your phone, and an encyclopedia, all connected to the world at your fingertips, which Steve Jobs could, and he and his team changed our world for the better. And my guess is that many of you carry his vision with you to class every day, because the Steve Jobs spirit exists today. I know that 77 percent in a Wall Street Journal report said that all students want to be their own boss. 77 percent of all students want to be their own boss. And I imagine your professors can testify that that's probably true. 45 percent want to start your own business. 42 percent of you said, "I will invent something that changes the world." I hope that's true. We need you to do that. Because the next generation of Steve Jobs are in this room right now, I believe, or here at this university, waiting to step up and drive the engine of American innovation and competition. We need you to be encouraged, and we need you to adapt to that type of thinking. But now, take by comparison a government enterprise. It's called the post office. The post office yearns to remain committed to paying higher labor costs that bear absolutely no comparison to wages and benefits that are paid in the private sector. They are billions of dollars in the red, but yet they look to the taxpayer for money, but they're unwilling to look at their real problem, which is unrealistically high labor costs. Researchers, entrepreneurs, investors across the United States are today paralyzed by President Obama's anti-business policies that have created profound uncertainty in the marketplace. And as president, I will signal by way of leadership to innovators that the time again has come to unleash the genius of Adam Smith's invisible hand working to create the wealth of the nation. And what drives investment and the execution of innovative ideas is an environment that fosters it. Here's an example: Israel. Israel today enjoys 2.5 times the venture investments of the United States. That's because they've embraced a culture that believes in innovation. My plan at MichelleBachmann.com, real jobs right now, are aimed at fostering that very same innovative culture, which will turn the economy around and create the high-paying jobs that you will want once you leave this university. Part of producing an effective workforce means that we have to reform employment law. Iowa employees deserve the right to work, and the federal government's National Labor Relations Board shouldn't interfere with that right like they're doing right now in South Carolina. And former Speaker of the House Nancy Pelosi said, "It would be better if that company, Boeing, shuts down in South Carolina if they refuse to become a union shop." How sad if the United States gets to that point, when a former Speaker of the House believes it's better that we would lose 1,000 jobs if they aren't unionized. Reforming employment law also means it's easier to reward good employees and to find bad ones a new line of work. And it also means reforming our unemployment insurance system. It was created 50 years ago to help workers through temporary layoffs. Under the model, after business picked up, they could go back to the same job, to the same factory, at the same company, and sell to the same customers. But that's not the world that we live in now, because you see, due to government regulations and high, uncompetitive taxes, when workers are laid off, unfortunately, the jobs aren't there to go back to. Because today, unemployment insurance, even by the admission of the newest Economic Council member to the president's own team, says that unemployment benefits are a disincentive to work, and they increase the length of time on joblessness. You see, unemployment benefits don't create jobs. In the 1980s, Ronald Reagan enacted a tax reform that created a period of unparalleled prosperity. And in my plan, I intend to increase our competitiveness by following Reagan's blueprint for tax reform, which had at its core principle, "Stop taxing investment and productivity." Because the real world of taxation, I know this as a former federal tax lawyer, is not reducible to a soundbite or bumper sticker. What we need is a real national discussion about what kind of tax system we really want, what will produce the greatest job growth and productivity. And as the only tax professional in the race, I look forward to leading that discussion with serious talk about the principles of what it means to have a fairer, flatter, and simpler system. First of all, I want to say, it's only fair that everyone should contribute something to the core government services, like national defense, our courts, our roads, and necessary infrastructure. Those are public goods. Everyone benefits, and everyone needs to pay something. It's only fair. I am the only candidate in this race who believes everyone needs to pay something. Let's face it, freedom isn't free, and everyone benefits from freedom. And today, we live in a nation where only 53 percent of Americans pay any federal income tax. 47 percent of Americans pay absolutely no federal income tax. People who pay nothing can easily forget the idea that there is no such thing as a free lunch. And second, even though everyone should pay something, those who can't afford to pay more should pay more. This is true not just in absolute terms. Someone at a higher income level should pay at least the same percentage of income as someone at a lower income level. That is the true Buffett rule. In other words, a flat tax should at least be flat and not tilted against lower and middle-income families. Third, fairness also demands that government limits its claims on your hard work and on your talents, the talents of the people at taxes. Because the income that you earn is not the government's. This is a fundamental belief that we need to understand. The money that you earn is yours, pure and simple. It doesn't belong to governments. It's your money, you earned it. When people in Washington say things like, "We can't afford a tax cut," they need to think about who the "we" is. It's your money, it's not the politicians. And when you say that government has first claim on the income earned through people's work and creativity, like President Obama has, then you're not far from saying that the people, that's us, belong to the government, but we don't. That's what the meaning of liberty is. The fundamental principle of a flatter tax system should be to level the playing field for everyone and all businesses. And the one thing that I think we all can agree on is that our tax system is not simple. Americans know this every time they get their 1040 tax form in the mail. Last year's Form 1040 had an instruction book. It was 179 pages long, and the problem was the lack of simplicity. It enabled the government to use the tax code as something other than merely a means to generate the revenue the government needs. It's actually a tool for social engineering by politicians and by the special interests that spend a lot of money on lobbyists that reside on K Street and prey on politicians and give them money to develop a system called "cronyism." That's also called political payoffs. And just as freedom isn't free, simplicity isn't free, the price is simplifying the tax code. And that's where politicians will have to stop using the tax code for politically-driven payoffs. And I will assure you, this is a lot easier said than done, as are most things in Washington. Because to simplify the tax code, we'll have to limit the number of different types of taxes and tax bases. So to accomplish a fairer and flatter and simpler system, it'll take a complete reform of this tax code. So what it will mean, quite frankly, is abolishing the current tax code, which I intend to do, and start over. Because my new tax system is just part of real jobs right now. It's solutions that call for repatriating. That means bringing back into the United States $1.2 trillion that were earned overseas into the United States. I want to take that level down to 0 percent, so we can get a true $1.2 trillion stimulus to go to work in the country right now to create jobs. Then I want to massively cut federal spending by eliminating government agencies and devolving these agencies to the states, who can then decide whether they want to pay for these programs. Repealing Obamacare in its totality is the bill that I introduced Repealing Obamacare in its totality is the bill that I introduced into the United States Congress. I have been fighting the government takeover of your health care. Cutting taxes on investment and productivity, including making America's corporate tax rates finally competitive in the global world. And repealing the Jobs and Housing Destruction Act, better known as Dodd-Frank in its totality. Because that's drying up credit and your possibility of starting a company and also buying your first home. Repealing the $1.8 trillion in annual job-killing regulations. This is real, and I hear about this more than anything else from Iowa businesses. Get the regulatory burden off my back. It's killing me. That's what Steve Jobs told President Obama only months before his passing. Increasing exports by finalizing free trade agreements, spurring new investment in America, inspiring innovation, legalizing American energy production—that will also produce an astounding 1.4 million high-paying jobs, including decreased regulations on developing new energy supplies from our abundant energy resources. You may not be aware, the United States is the number-one energy-resource-rich nation in the world. You may think it's Saudi Arabia or some Middle East nation. It isn't. It's the United States. The problem has been the federal government that has put off limits American energy resources that can be a part of our solution to job creation and growth and competitiveness. And finally, we need to enforce America's immigration laws. That means ending taxpayer benefits and magnets to illegal aliens and their children. That costs us $113 billion a year, and it costs every household $1,000 a year. Bill Gates said, quote, "During the past 30 years, U.S. innovation has been the catalyst for the digital information revolution. If the United States is to remain a global economic leader, we must foster an environment that enables a new generation to dream up innovations." Talent in this country is not the problem. The issue is political will. I can tell you from experience, Bill Gates is 1,000% correct. What we are missing is political will in Washington, D.C. And that's what I bring to bear—a proven record of five years of remaining an outsider and fighting for free markets, fighting for lower taxes, fighting for lower job-killing regulations, and fighting for you. It's what I learned growing up here in Iowa—the common-sense rule that you don't spend more money than what you take in. I didn't become a part of the system and melt into it. I fought the system. Because my goal isn't to manage a bureaucracy. My goal is to dismantle an overweening bureaucracy. And answering that challenge is nothing new to our country because we've met and conquered them before. Thomas Jefferson said, "A revolution now and then is a good thing." And I think our nation needs an extreme home makeover of sorts, a makeover for competitiveness. And to become competitive and create jobs, our challenge will be to conquer the drag of a very expensive government and take away its power over individual achievement and economic growth. If we choose wisely—and we have very little time to do this. As I said, 2012, I believe, is the last exit ramp to return to the American dream. But we can if we grab this final brass ring. We can then prosper and grow. The Obama way has brought economic misery because we have a living laboratory that proves government intervention leads ultimately to poverty. Government will have to diminish so that you have the power and the chance and the money to succeed and grow, and so that free markets can once again be free. And as President of the United States, I'm prepared to meet that challenge and do the hard work that's necessary to restore this nation as the economic leader that it must be for you and for your children and for mine. And so I thank you for your kind attention, and I look forward to your questions and your comments. Thank you. So if you have questions, I am delighted to take them. And thank you for your kind attention. Yes. Why don't you say your name and where you're from?
My name is Dylan Clark. I'm from Fort Worth, Colorado.
Michelle Bachmann, being such a proponent and pro-life candidate, would you pledge to contribute to PEPFAR and maintain the funding, something Barack Obama has not done?
PEPFAR is something that I was a part of when I was in the United States Congress. We did send money to PEPFAR. Right now, our problem is the overspending. It will have to be a part of the entire budget. Every part of the budget will be up for grabs. All nations need to contribute to PEPFAR. And again, this is dealing with AIDS funding. All nations to be a part of this, not just the United States. For years, the United States has been the number-one contributor to relieving poverty and to programs that benefit people across the world. If we can do it, we will do it. But our problem right now is overspending. Again, if we have to go to countries like China and borrow 43 cents of every dollar that we have, it's very difficult for us to continue to spend that kind of money. The only way that you can be benevolent and compassionate is to spend out of your abundance, your overage. For your family, for my family, we can't spend borrowed money on compassion. We have to spend the money that we earn. Right now, we're not following that model. Right now, we're in a tremendous problem. So I can't guarantee that that will continue to go on, but it's something that the nation will have to consider. But thank you for asking that question. The good news is we've made substantial strides in that area. And because of the United States making a profound commitment to finding new cures for AIDS, we have found drugs that have gone a long way toward ending the suffering for a lot of people. And that's one thing that I want to continue, is research on many different diseases to relieve suffering.
Michelle, our next question comes from Carter.
Thank you, Madam Representative. Just quickly, about your view of the Constitution, I'm just curious on one thing you indicated— correct me if I'm wrong, of course—but that the founders tell that the powers of government should be limited to those that are senior, correct? However, Representative, I am curious how that fits into, say, the political split that existed at the time between the Federalists and the present public, specifically that the founders themselves could not agree whether or not the powers of government should be limited to only go to the enumerated Constitution or whether they required a degree of patience for that. I'm just curious if you agree with that, Representative.
Well, my opinion is that the Congress made it very clear that they had just overthrown a tyrant, and they'd paid a tremendous price for tyranny. And so what they wanted was a government that would work, that was large enough to work, but yet one that wouldn't strangle their lives again like they had been strangled with King George. And trust me, they went to war over a stamp act. And so they were willing to go to war over that. We're in a much different situation today. And while it's difficult to find agreement, certainly Washington, D.C. proves that today. It's no different today as it was then. They did agree that the United States Congress should be limited and enumerated in its powers. And that's why the Congress, I believe, needs to devolve many of these responsibilities that we can't afford anymore back to the states. The states can decide if they want to continue these programs or not. Thank you for asking that question.
Michelle, we are—
And again, that's Article 1 of the Constitution. That describes the specific powers that Congress has. Those that Congress does not have are reserved to the states and then to you as individual citizens.
Michelle, our next question comes from Anna.
Hi, Anna.
Hi, Michelle. Thank you for coming. My question—you stated that you're a protector of life. I'm a woman who has been sexually assaulted. One in four women in their lifetime will be sexually assaulted. I have an acquaintance, and I think her story really speaks to people. She was raped. She was sexually assaulted throughout her life by a neighbor. And then on her 16th birthday, she was raped by a brother's friend. On her 18th birthday, she passed out and woke up to a man raping her. She went to a hospital to get help, to get herself checked out, you know? She couldn't afford the rape kit, and so she was denied. She went to a Planned Parenthood to get checked for STDs because that was the only center that she could go to. They denied her as well because she couldn't prove her residency. And then at that point, she was, you know, struggling with so much, she called a suicide helpline. Their funding had been cut so much that she was put on a waiting list for a suicide helpline. I guess, how do you plan to protect women's lives? I mean, don't you place a value on that as well?
Well, of course, and so do our laws. We believe very clearly that all life is precious, no matter who. And I'm terribly sorry for what you have gone through yourself personally. That's a tragedy. No one should have to go through that. That's why I believe that we vigorously have to enforce laws dealing with rape. And I think that this is not something that we should take lightly. This is something that's extremely serious, that we need to talk about, to let people know that this is not acceptable. This is a criminal act. It's a violent act. And we need to hold the perpetrators—to the fullest extent of the law—liable for their heinous actions. These are terrible actions that have profound effects on the lifetime of a woman. Now, the girl that you spoke of has gone through unspeakable tragedy, terrible tragedy. And that's why I'm grateful that all across Iowa, visited pro-life centers that don't turn anyone away. They don't have to prove anything. At pro-life centers, women can come in, they can have kits, they can come in and get tested, and they will find care and protection. The pro-life centers that I have gone to not only provide testing for women, they try to find jobs for women, they try to provide clothing for them, ongoing counseling, protection for them. Because it isn't just a physical matter, it's an emotional matter, and it has potential to scar them for years. And so they try to be there to be a friend and a help. And so I believe that we do protect life from conception until natural death. And that's what I plan to do as President of the United States. Thank you for asking that question. I'm terribly sorry about what you've endured.
All right, Congresswoman, our next question comes here from Andrea.
Hi, Congresswoman. Thank you for coming. You talked about job-killing regulations, and you talked about fair competition and a free market. But I'm just curious how this is done with a small government. And I ask that specifically in regards to energy. So you talked about utilizing America's energy resources. I absolutely agree with that, but I just worry that without the proper regulations in place, that we're going to have more disasters, like, for example, two that we had in April of last year—the coal mine explosion, which killed about 30 people in West Virginia, and the BP oil spill, which now we're familiar with. So how do we use those resources? Natural gas is one that's been, you know, very much talked about recently. How do we do that without regulation? How do we protect our land, air, and water?
Well, we certainly do have regulation, and they aren't going to all go away. But part of the problem has been that we have layers of regulation, so much so that the regulations conflict with one another, and businesses don't even know how to comply. They can be out of compliance with the state and not the feds, or they can be out of compliance with the feds and not the state. And so we have layers upon layers upon layers of bureaucracy. And that's why we have 50 EPAs. And I think it's important that we let the states be the primary driver of their local EPA laws, not the federal government. I think that's the states that need to enforce those laws. So I think we need to devolve that responsibility down to the states, let them handle it. The federal government does have a place in a case-by-case basis, certainly dealing with our waters. That's something that the federal government needs to deal with. Certainly in international waters, we need to be involved in those disputes and on issues between the states. But the federal government shouldn't be the ones who are the first resort when it comes to these rules. This needs to be handled primarily by the states.
Representative Bachmann, we have Matt over here who has a question.
Hey, Matt.
Thank you, Representative Bachmann. You talked a lot about economic reform and, more specifically, reform of the tax code. And other candidates in the race have come out with tax plans and attached percentages and numbers to both federal and corporate tax rates. Do you have any specifics as far as tax rates for your plan?
Mine are based upon the principles and the blueprint that comes from Ronald Reagan in the 1980s. That's not a theory. That's a proven, workable plan, what Ronald Reagan put forward. It wasn't a perfect plan. He did the best that he could. He worked with a Democrat Congress. But it brought forth an economic miracle that was unparalleled in modern times. And those are the same principles that I adopt. And the way that it works in Washington, a president can put forward a plan, but it always gets changed because you've got to work together with both the House and with the Congress. And it's the principles that I'm putting forward. My principles are very different. It's that, first of all, everyone should pay something. Now, that even differs with Ronald Reagan. Ronald Reagan's plan had what was called the Earned Income Tax Credit, and that took a number of people off of the tax rolls. I believe everyone benefits by this magnificent country. Even if all they can afford is $10, I think they need to pay something. Because that's part of the dependency mentality that's been created now in the United States. People think that government should constantly be paying them, rather than people having to contribute to government. It's really reminiscent of what Jack Kennedy said in his inaugural address in the early 1960s, when he said, "Ask not what your government can do, ask what you can do for your country." I hope I got that right. I think I got that right. I learned that for the first time here in second grade in Cedar Falls, Iowa, in my classroom. But the concept is, it isn't about the government supplying us, it's about recognizing that we also have a duty to our government. We're in a very big hole right now. I hope I was able to convey that meaning to all of you. We're in a very big hole. And in order to unbury ourselves out of it, it will require sacrifice from every American. And so people who have been used to—for years—never paying anything in in taxes, they need to start paying something. That's what has to change. That's a profound difference. And they have to recognize that the federal government won't be their source of supply. So as to specific rates, my plan gives specific principles that I'll abide by. And again, it depends on what the final need is. Because right now, all of us send into Washington $2.2 trillion in revenue. The problem is, the federal government spends 100% of that, but they spend 1.5 trillion more. So the question is, do we want to raise more than the 2.2 revenue that we're sending in? Do we want to raise that up so it's another 1.5 trillion? Or do we want to cut back on that spending? And then do we want to raise that 2 trillion, or will it be something less? I think when you embrace a pro-growth model, like Reagan did in the '80s, the final result is that you grow the economy. And that's the only way we're going to come out of this, is if we grow the economy because that's what creates jobs. And that's what all of you need. Thanks for asking that question.
All right, Congressmen, our next question comes from Annie. You're in the back.
Hi.
Hi, Annie.
I think this really goes right off your last question. I'm interested in knowing what you think of federal requirements for the minimum wage, especially when it comes to the fact that people can work extremely hard in this country and work two jobs and still not make enough to live.
Well, that's true. That's the argument that we hear from people on why we have to continually raise the minimum wage. So the argument—the logical argument—would be, if people can't live on the current minimum wage, then why don't we mandate that it's $20 an hour? Or why don't we mandate that it's $30 an hour? If the goal is that the minimum wage should be $20 an hour or $30 an hour, that would satisfy that basic premise that people need to live on it. Would you agree that that's a good idea?
I think that some cases—
So what level do you think the minimum wage should be?
$20 an hour, $16 an hour?
$16 or $20 an hour? Okay. Anyone think it should be $25 an hour? Anyone think it should be $30 an hour? Okay, so you think the top rate is about 20 or 16? No? Anybody else disagree? Okay, well, everyone agrees with you then, I think, that it should be maybe $16 or $20 an hour. Is that true? Everyone agrees that it should be $16 or $20 an hour?
No.
No? Do you think lower? Okay. Why lower?
All that's going to do is drive inflation up 200% the next day.
Okay, anyone else? Agreed. Okay. Let me tell you as a job creator what happens when you have minimum wage increases. Part of the reason why you saw the spike in escalating unemployment this summer was because unskilled workers were not hired by employers. It's a down economy. And employers would like to be able to hire, but they don't have the money to be able to hire because of the cost increases on minimum wage. And what the data show is that when you increase a minimum wage, you actually reduce the amount of employment opportunities, especially for entering workers. Because a lot of what happens at the jobs that are entry-level jobs is training. People come into businesses, and they're learning on the jobs, whether it's dishwashers, whether it's file clerks. And so employers just don't hire. And so we have higher unemployment. So it depends on what problem you're trying to solve. If you're trying to make sure that people have a wage that they can live on—if that's the goal—then that's one issue. But people ordinarily, they don't stay static. They don't stay in the same position. They'll start out at a certain wage level, and after they've acquired skills, they move up. It isn't static. And so for years, there was no minimum wage, and there was greater levels of full employment because kids would go and start working, maybe as a 12-year-old. They'd get a job picking beans in a bean field. I remember picking beans in a bean field for 35 cents a container because it was based upon my productivity. It wasn't a minimum wage. It was what was my productivity. But I was willing to work for it because I was a kid, and it provided me with employment. When the federal government comes in and says that employer must— When the federal government comes in and says that employer must pay a certain amount, then what that means, quite frankly, is you will have more unemployment. And so it depends on what your goal is.
Congresswoman Bachmann, our final question comes from Matt today. Or Ben, excuse me.
Hi. You said earlier on that you want to reduce corporate taxes in Iowa and yet make a flat rate for everyone in the United States. Why don't you just, like, a lot of those companies are outsourcing out to the United States. Wouldn't you make it harder for them to do that, to keep more jobs in the United States?
Well, the corporate tax rate today is why a lot of companies are leaving the United States. Because, as I had said in my remarks, the average corporate tax rate globally was 47%. It was very high, and the United States was lower. Now, our average corporate tax rate, when you add state and federal, is about 40%, whereas Europe's, on average, is about 25%, and it's falling. That's the difference. And I will tell you, I went to one manufacturer in West Des Moines, and he told me that he bought a piece of equipment for $1 million. And he has a Des Moines plant, and he has a plant up in Canada. And he said, "Michelle, last year, Canada's corporate tax rate was 18%. The United States was 34%. But then you had to add on Iowa's corporate tax rate, too." So the corporate tax rate that he played here in America was so prohibitively high that he said he chose, it killed him, but he sent that piece of equipment to Canada. And when he sent that piece of equipment, he sent jobs up to Canada, too. Governor Branstad, I was just with him earlier this week in Pella, Iowa, at a manufacturing forum. And he said that he had tried to persuade an Illinois manufacturer to bring his company and his jobs here to Iowa. And the manufacturer said, "I'm not going to come to Iowa. The taxes aren't any cheaper in Iowa than they are in Illinois. I'm going to be going up to Canada, because the corporate tax rate is cheaper in Canada than it is here." One thing you have to recognize, it isn't just one person that makes that decision. It's 10,000 business people every day are making these decisions. It isn't that corporations are mean, and they don't like America, and so they're moving these companies out of the United States. It's the fact that the cost of doing business is extremely high in the United States. When you add, according to the National Association of Manufacturers, when you look at the price of taxes and the price of torts, which is the lawsuit liability, and when you look at the price of energy and the lack of trade opportunities, doing business in the United States as a manufacturer is 20% higher than the rest of the world. That means you have manufacturers fleeing the United States. I want more manufacturing in the United States. That's jobs, good, high-paying jobs. The industry says their average jobs are $77,000 a year. I'd rather have those jobs here in the United States. That's why, if we lower the corporate tax burden, if we lower the cost of the regulatory burden, then we'll have more jobs in the United States. And that's what you need, after all, are more jobs and higher wages. And that's what I want to make sure that we have in the future, Matt. So thank you. Thank you for your attention. Thank you for coming today. I appreciate your kind attention. Thank you, everyone, for your 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 attention. Thank you, everyone.